I think I said you have to lead the meeting until George passes.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
You are.
Oh, really? Yeah. We were serious.
For sure.
That's why we need some negotiated contracts.
Okay, let's start.
All right. It's seven o'clock, so I'll call a meeting to order. Our first order of business is to adopt the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions to be made?
We delete everything?
I know we had a scheduled delegation. Don't see them here yet, so maybe we can move around the public delegations and switch it with the scheduled delegation. Other than that, is there any other changes? Saying none?
He's moving to adopt the agenda.
All in favor? Carry it. And as we mentioned, we'll move to our public delegations. And we have a couple here, so I have called Brett and George. George, would you want to start?
I can start.
And George, because we do report these and broadcast it, we'll get you just to say your name and your organization that you're representing. And we're going to get you a microphone. Oh, maybe not.
Come on, councillor Steve.
How was that?
Hi, George.
Hi, George.
I thought that was Alan Bloom, because that's what the name tag says.
Good evening, Manasseh councillors. For anyone that doesn't know me, my name is George Keye. I'm a lifelong resident of the community. I was phoned last week by one of the councillors about an article in Lakeside Leader regarding chemotherapy treatment in Slave Lake and how they are going full bore to try and get, as the newspaper article said, chemotherapy back into their community. And I was asked if I could remember such a thing being in Slave Lake, and I said, no, I certainly don't. So I asked around some of the people in the health business, and they said, no, don't remember that. We were ecstatic when they let Grand Prairie have chemotherapy treatment. So the conversation carried on. The council said, well, I really wouldn't have a problem if it did go to Slave Lake. And that upset me a little bit, because I spent a whole bunch of time getting a health facility in High Prairie, and part of it is dedicated for chemotherapy. There's space there to put it in. So I thought, no, that just doesn't sound right to me, that we should be doing anything to support Slave Lake's deal to get chemotherapy. So I thought of what we could do about it. And I come up with an idea. I would like to see us do a cost projection on what it would cost to finish that space that we have in our health facility as compared to what it would cost to do it in Slave Lake. We're going to have to get some numbers as to how many people in our community, and probably in the last year, maybe even two years, have taken chemotherapy to justify the expense. But I thought a good place to start would be to go and ask the contractor that's doing the dialysis thing. They currently have all the tradespeople there, should be able to give us a pretty rough number as to what it would cost to finish that small space, because I think it was something in less than 500 square feet. And I thought about it. We could furnish it. I'm sure that the Lakers Exilery or the Health Foundation would be willing to supply the accommodations there, the chairs and whatever else was needed. So I'm just putting this proposal on to our council here and seeing what your opinions are. I think it's a worthwhile project. I had to go show chemo myself, so I know how hard it is. I had to get somebody to drive me to Grand Prairie. First two treatments I took in Edmonton, and I said, holy smokes, there's got to be someplace closer than Edmonton. They said, yeah, Grand Prairie just opened up. Good, let's go to Grand Prairie. Well, I take a treatment, and I made it sometimes 30 miles out of Grand Prairie before I got sick. So I know that it's not a fun trip, even to go to Slave Lake. It's not a fun trip. That's why I fought so hard to get that space put in the hospital. So I think that we have to start a lobby group and come up with some numbers. And I was looking at the pictures on the wall there, and I see the Providence Hospital. That's where I was born. And maybe Rod can help us out here. Is there a grant for endangered species, Rod? Not many people that can say they were born in High Prairie anymore. So that's just an idea that I had, and I was wondering how it would fit in with what the council was thinking.
I'm in touch with some of the contractors that are there currently, and I will make sure I talk to them. And if I have council's blessing, I'll do my best to get the numbers for you and have them by tomorrow.
George, I'm glad you brought that up, because actually at the meeting I was at with AHS yesterday, we did bring that up as well. And we did, they couldn't remember either, and they've been around a bit too. But what they're doing is they're actually looking at asking them to come forward and to explain what they meant by it. So they're actually going to be challenging that group to come and give a presentation to the Community Health Wellness Clinic, which our group goes a little beyond that, and we look at different parts of the hospital. And so we're going to get down to the bottom of what you're looking at, and I'll be more than happy now that you come forward to then look at, give you a proposal to them, actually, with any sort of help that the council would allow me to have.
I think it's a good concept. I mean, like you say, the space is there, and if we can get it here and to keep logging. I know, you know, our priority has been to talk, you know, about the endangered species, has been to get maternity back in the hospital and be able to have that, because that brings the operating room with it, and it brings, you know, all of the things that you need, like the ultrasound and all of that have to be working and functioning to be able to have babies. So I think, you know, that's, that would probably, in my head, is still the priority to get that. But to keep pushing for something else and keep going on that, I think you've got to keep on it. Otherwise, it doesn't happen. So, you know what, I'm in favor of pushing if we can get something going there. And my understanding, and I'm not sure if it's accurate, but, you know, I'd heard that they could bring the cocktails up with them, because they can't sort of mix them here, and they wouldn't have the chemicals. But they'd drive them up, and then they could give them out. But if they were doing that, even if it was in Slave Lake, they might drop some off there and bring some up here, or maybe one day there and one day here. So maybe both can happen or something. That would be good, too.
Actually, if I remember right, Mayor, when we talked about that, there was supposed to be a fan put in and mix the cocktail here. Get the stuff mixed right here. And trust me, that would be the way to go. Because like I said, it was a long trip back from Grand Prairie.
Like I say, I'm not sure if that's even feasible to be able to mix the stuff here, but it's something that they're going to find.
No, it certainly is. There's no problem to mix it here. You just get people that are trained a little bit and pitter-patter, let's get at it, and it can be done.
Like I say, that's what I just heard, that somebody had mentioned that it happened again, so.
I think it's a no-brainer, George. It should have been something within right from the start, in my mind. Right from the start, they give us a hospital with just an empty shell with not a lot of services. Those services should have been in the building right from the start. The dialysis, the chemo, the maternity ward, it goes on and on and on.
The hell.
The hellapath. All the stuff goes on there in the beginning, and they just kept peeling it back up because of money, because of budget. But now it's all put forward onto the public, on us generally, to try to come up with the funds and the way to put it back in then, right? So they've just downloaded it again. So I think as a council, that is our job as a lobby for that. We should be logging for that, because we need that as a community, and we're the voice of the community. So that will absolutely go hard for that again, just like we did with the dialysis. Just like we've done for anything, a deal with the hospital, whether it's doctor retention or anything like that. We'll do whatever we can to hammer on the ears of the upper government. That's our job. I'm for it, absolutely.
Okay, well, yeah, sort of got, and I think there's a feeling that we'd love to see it. So thanks for bringing that up. Was there anything else?
No, I think that if you can get the numbers put together and form a delegation and make a presentation to the Health Minister, who can then tell Alberta Health Services, "Daushau," if they have an authenticimal fortitude. That seems to be lacking a little bit. But I think if we put together a good enough proposal, it would be awfully hard to turn it down.
Since a lot of AHS right now, the meeting, the committee I'm on, is looking at bringing people back and forth, you know, it's like a specialist from Grand Prairie over. Would you be okay with the concept? Because we need to have a wide variety here of decisions. Would you be okay if they brought in the nurses to do it a couple of times a month as opposed to being there full-time? Would that be an option in your mind?
Well, that's certainly an option, but I wouldn't want to jump up and down and say, yeah, look what we got. I mean, we can get a couple more nurses here. I understand that there's some nurses in Newfoundland looking over a bunch of jobs. So let's get at it. I had a meeting with some of the middle management people in Health Services, and they said, well, our recruiters are trying desperately. And I said, well, maybe your recruiters need to be replaced, because they come up to me like they're doing a very good job. So that would be the last option that I would look at, right? But I think if we can create some more jobs and bring some more people into our community, that's what we should be doing.
Yep, no, I mean, we've been fighting those battles for getting more staff here for a long time.
Seven years.
And you've been doing those that you know. I don't have to tell you about.
Yeah, I've been down that road, Brian.
And you paved it, didn't you, Brett?
No, no, I put the base coat down. Thank you, council, for your time.
Thank you.
Do you need counsel? Do you just want to get started?
Sure, maybe just say, you know, your name and for everyone, and they know.
Did you print the stuff off that I sent?
Yeah, we have. And they're coming in as just a citizen of High Prairie.
That's all, yeah. My name's Brett Hawkins. I've lived here for just over two years now. I'm coming to talk to you about a possible train whistle cessation bylaw. I've done the research on it. The two that I found were in the City of Ladue and in Spruce Grove, so they do exist. CN does do this. What you guys have in front of you are the steps to go through. It's a pretty straightforward process. I approach you guys, you guys then approach CN. You make sure you have the right grade crossings in place, as well as there's certain things like a railway right-of-way. That's the one that I don't, I don't know if you guys have, but I don't see it being, it's on. I'm assuming it's federal land or some sort of, whoever controls the railway crossing, but that's the only one. I don't know if you guys have that, but I also don't know the downside of if you don't giving them 400 meters of just right-of-way. But that's something that if Rod looks into it, what, if it's good to go or not. But my other, looking into it, there's four things that what you need. It's that railway right-of-way, but then the other ones were, you have to have the grade crossing that's applicable, which in my research it is. It's a one-track 50-kilometer road, so you just need bells and whistles. And at the two intersections on Highway 749 in town here, and then just south of the county office, you have both of those there. So from my understanding, they fit that bill. The area must not have repeated incidences of unauthorized access of the railway. I've asked people around here if there's been any incidents on the tracks. I haven't heard of anything. I've heard of one 15 years ago about a gentleman who was passed out. But I don't think that fits this bill of an incident, so. And then the last one's the area must not require whistling for a grade crossing located outside the area. So the way I understand that, I don't see a scenario where you'd need one, especially at 3:00 in the morning, which is the reason why I'm here right now. So, yeah, that's what I came here to talk about, to see if you guys are open to administration researching this problem line and see if CN says, says, no, we need it for whatever reason, then no, too bad, so sad for me. Or if they say you need to put some sort of money into it, I'm not asking you guys to put any budget into it. I'm just, if you guys don't need to do anything, and all it is is just getting approval from CN, figure why not, so.
Yeah, it's the 3:00 AM one that's the more, the one in the morning isn't as bad.
I thought that was just the whistles, everybody get and go to the bathroom.
It's time to move the mountains. It's only for the soul guys.
I don't go that.
I know that in Froni, we had three crossings from one end of downtown to the other, and the train would start 100 meters back and wouldn't stop till it. So we call it Froni Pause. We just waited until the train stopped and then carried on talking. It's very difficult to get changed. At least it wasn't way back when, in those days.
Well, you're dealing with safety regulation, right? That's a safety requirement that they go through, right? So in order to change their safety regulation, reg, it's going to be a tall work. But I know, like, I remember in Redditch with the daylight, they used to come through the public transport. They never had horns, but they always had the crossing arms and the lights and the bells on the crossing, right? Where they just, as it flew through, right? You didn't have a horn, you didn't hear a horn going through down to Redditch. But so maybe that's something you might have to add to the crossings is to use the toll cars. 300,000 for cross arrows? Well, that's good for CN, though.
Again, I'm not asking.
Yeah.
For 300,000, but from my understanding, you don't need a gate. It's a one-track 50-kilometer road. So if you have two tracks, then they need the gate, or if you get above 80 kilometers, you need the gate. But this is all coming from the Government of Canada website, so from my understanding, it should be good, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but.
And you'd said two communities have a whistle setting.
Yeah, I've sent both those bylaws to Rod, Spruce Grove and City of Ladue.
Oh, okay.
See, the three crossings have lights all through, like, or just out of town, east or west of town. The one right south of the town, and then the one around 50, and the one just outside doesn't have any lights.
Yeah. I just mentioned the two, the thing that I sent to Rod. I think those are the only two that qualify, yeah.
If I could add something, my hometown in Agasson, British Columbia, has had a bylaw that bans whistles for 40, 50 years.
Yeah, I think it's doable.
Is that right? I have to take them off my trucks, if you're saying.
Okay, what we will do with this is it'll come back to council, and we'll have to make a formal, you know, motion and stuff in the future, but we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, like that's, I don't even think you guys have to do that just yet. Like, it's like there's an eight-step process on your page there, and that's the sixth one, like, oh. Because there's no point you guys making a motion, and then Rod calls them, and they say, well, no. So, right?
Because they'll get into it.
Yeah, so what, yeah, all I'm looking for is you guys okaying Rod to look into it, and then after that, we can, I can come back again if this ball gets rolling or not, but.
You know that half the town will want to erect a statue of you, and the other half will wake up at 3:00 in the morning with no train going, so going, what the hell, where'd the train go? So you're in a very dangerous spot.
I'll take the statue, and I don't take the egg. I'll sleep better even with an egg getting thrown at my head.
What's your address?
As a longtime resident here, I just never even, perhaps you could even ask for them not to pull the whistle. I just have lived with it, right? Yeah, if we can make this work, and they can do that going through town, I think, why not? Right? As long as it's safe for the community and it's, yeah. Guess I've just been numb to the whistle.
Thank you, council. Thank you very much.
All right, it doesn't look like our scheduled delegation is going to make it here tonight. And if he does show up, maybe at a different time, we can adjust their schedule to accommodate it. So for now, we'll move on to item 3.1, the Fire Chief's Report. Can I get a motion on this one? Councillor Danekah.
I make motion that council received the Fire Chief's July 2021 report for information.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And the chief is up there, so I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, I'm the senior council. I report my report for information. Just a couple of highlights that I guess I can add to. The pump test and the inspections, the mire piping in the ladder was repaired the other day. I crawled inside and tightened up a couple bolts, so it was going good. I'll look after that. And as far as the grant is concerned, there's a picture in paper. We managed to get $1,500 towards purchasing of hazardous spill response. We do have that big trailer, but that doesn't actually belong to the town. So kind of looking the future and also adding to or augmenting that trailer. We're purchasing some things, if we've got like a hole in a 45-gallon drum, we can address the spill and control it. So we're doing that, taking that step. Statistically, if you want to have a look at statistics, area where we set a lot of our call volume down this year, which is a good thing in a sense, I guess, overall, call volume is down. And we have placed the ad for the old fire engine in the newspaper. That's our initial try, and as of yet, I don't believe we have received any bids. Fingers crossed. And from there, my plan is to potentially go to either Kijiji or a government advertisement place for Richie Brothers or something along those lines. That's kind of the next phase or next plan with that. So that's all I've got. You got questions?
All right, okay, so I'll throw it open to council for questions. Councillor Danekah.
On your graph here, town alarms, now is that all of the alarms? Like, does that include, like, the false alarms as well and everything?
Monoterial alarms as well, yeah, monoterial alarms. And whether they are, we've been called out and stood down, or called out and we've actually had members attend location.
Okay, because I see it's still quite high.
It's high. And in all honesty, when I look at the numbers, there isn't, there actually isn't a lot of repeated events right now, which is good. So it's like people getting new systems and finding the glitches and getting them figured out, so.
Councillor Gilroy.
One, how are we doing with false alarms? Are they going down? We just made the new bylaw about the number of false alarms that they have before you are called. And just a humorous bit, maybe you should advertise the old fire engine as a parade float. And any town that wants to be parade float can have that, since there seems to be a fire engine in every parade float there ever is.
Yeah, I guess so. As far as the alarm, like I said, statistically, we're down for our running toes, so. Which again is a good thing as far as fire alarms.
Anyway, the fire engine doesn't have to work for a parade float. It do, it only has to work if you need it for a fire engine.
So we could just decorate it and leave it fully decorated and rent it out.
How are you thinking?
Just change the letters.
Just change the letters.
Just ask them to have their.
Magnet.
Magnet, that's right, just magnetic, that's the words, good.
What are you going to advertise it for, price-wise?
I have no idea. I will consult other people.
Yeah.
Might take your phone call.
I have an eye for you to see.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in. We moved his report for information. All in favor? And our peace officer's report. Can I get a motion on this one? Councillor Gilroy.
That council received Senior Peace Officer's July 2021 report for information.
It could be Alan's new bylaw, Trump.
The sire, the sire is different, though. You have to be going.
Mike is the homo.
Hi, Al.
Hi, Al.
Where they get the love for the dogs and the seriousness.
You're going to drive them into retirement with these kind of.
I'm just open for questions now. I'm not in the ordinary ear, but.
All right, we'll throw it open for questions. No questions coming in.
It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, yeah. All right, well, no questions, where you get off easy. You get out there and stop crime and or evil off the street.
Thank you, Al.
All right, to now, we have a motion for information. All in favor? Carry it.
This is the numbers from April, May, they're remaining 000, and then all of a sudden, June, 23 days.
All right, moving on to 5.1, our regular meeting minutes. Can I get a motion on that? Councillor Gilroy.
The council approved the minutes from the July 27, 2021, regular meeting of council as presented.
All right, did anybody see any changes or alterations needed? Seeing none, all in favor? Carry it. Now we move on to our special public hearing on the Land Use Bylaw. Councillor Gilroy.
The council approved the minutes from the July 28, 2021. The council approved the minutes from the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one special meeting, public hearing as presented.
All right. Any changes, alterations? Counselor Danica.
I, I know the, um, I mean, it says I was absent from there, but, I mean, the, uh, the sign outside said five thirty. So, I just wanna clarify, you know, like, it's just, like, the little issue where it says I'm absent when I really wasn't because I was here before at five thirty, even though the meeting was at five in the books, but on the sign, it's at five thirty. Just a little technical.
But then, and, you know, for the purpose, like, yeah, I know where you're coming from, but you weren't at the meeting when we ran through it, so.
I understand.
But no, we understand why you weren't there.
There you go.
Okay, uh, anything else on these? Nope, all in favor. Carry it. And then we had our special, another special meeting regarding amendment. Counselor Burley.
The council approved the minutes from the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty one special meeting of council. Land use bylaw amendment, had through that.
Okay, another very quick, short meeting.
Maybe they're not.
Yeah.
She was so late, she missed both.
All right. Seeing none, all in favor. Do you want to stay after class? Carry it. All right. Moving on then to item six point one, our, uh, council procedure bylaw. Can I get a motion on that?
Okay.
Counselor Stenhouse.
So, my motion is that council add question of privilege shall mean an urgent motion made at a meeting which seeks an immediate ruling on an alleged violation of the rights or privileges of members as a whole or in regards to a negative personal remark. I'd like that added to the definitions and that council give, once it's added, that council give third and final reading to the bylaw, zero three dash two zero two one, council procedure bylaw this tenth day of August, two thousand twenty one.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is you.
There was a definition that was missed.
You want to. You want to pass the bylaw providing there's a definition added?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, and just because I was a little shocked at where you went with that. Can you repeat what you wanted to add, just so I understand.
Where is it at? Where are you putting it?
Question of privilege is not in the definitions. Okay?
So, would you like me to read the definition of question of privilege? Yeah, and where did you get a question of privilege? Like, I haven't heard that.
Because it's in the bylaw.
Oh.
It's in, it's stated in the bylaw.
Okay. Where is that just?
Okay, I'll tell you. It's on page, it's on page forty three, it's mentioned in page, sorry, forty seven and page forty eight of the bylaw. And I'm talking about the little pointers down below. Okay, on page forty seven, if you go to twenty three point eight.
There it is.
Question of privilege.
Oh, okay.
And then on page forty eight, twenty four point four point four.
Okay.
But there is no definition for it, so I just left the definition put in the bylaw.
So, where, I, I'm just curious, where did you get the, the definition of a question of privilege?
Google.
Google, okay. Uh, like, yeah, I, I wouldn't have known it's a good thing, yeah, because, yes. And can you repeat that definition?
Okay, the definition of question of privilege is shall mean an urgent motion made at a meeting which seeks an immediate ruling on an alleged violation of the rights or privileges of members as a whole or in regards to a negative personal remark.
So, that's the definition.
Right.
What does that mean? As opposed to?
Can you put it in a sentence?
Put it in a sentence, okay. As opposed to point of.
I'm lost, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, we're having a conversation and it seems like all I know for information. When I say. It's, um, it's an allegation that you have information that you should.
Okay, well, I, I, you know what, I think your point is good. There's this thing in here, it's a question of privilege.
Right, it's used in the bylaw, but we don't have a negative student.
Yeah, and we should have that clarified so we know what we're talking about, so, and I think we could take that and I, I would be more comfortable saying administration come up with a definition that.
Okay.
But anyways, I'm gonna turn it over to Rod. I see he wants to speak at that a little bit.
Well, yeah, question of privilege is, I mean, it is in bylaw and is something I've seen used, uh, not very often in my career, I've said it for hours and hours, but it does come up, uh, I've heard it when, uh, that exact example where, uh, a counselor accused one of the other counselors of having information that's not the other counselors. This is, you know, the information comes from the C A O, it should be given to all counselors. Unless it's just something pretty minor, but if it's something that's a specific issue, it should be given to all counselors. Um, and it's basically just a, you know, to put things on the table that, you know, there was some information that was given to one and that's why they're more astute or more informed about a line issue. Um, it also has to do when there's, uh, potentially attacks on various individuals or people are being, you know, rude to other counselors. You can ask for that to be, you know, rescinded or apologized. That's, that's what that's used for. Um, it's a pretty standard definition in, in looking at it. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, you know, by help or made it worse.
Well, I, you know what, I think you brought up a good point that it should be in the definition so people understand what it is, absolutely. So, in my mind, I would think that we should send it back to administration, bring it forward with the definition in there so we get a chance to look at it and understand it better than just right now. And make sure that we're okay with the wording as it's being presented. But I think the other thing we should, because this is one of these that keeps coming up and we find more things and you go, wow. It'd be nice to have all of those changes once and catch everything so we don't have to bring it back four times. Uh, but I did notice a couple of other things in here I wanted to, to mention too, so that's why I'm going, hmm. But, and, and I don't, you know, it's, yeah, you always seem to catch something different when you read through it, but. Counselor Danica.
So, this brings sort of the segue into my issue, I guess. We have a, we have a bylaw committee. So, the bylaw committee goes through the stuff and then we bring it back to council and then council goes through it then, comes back to us and we bring it back. Council goes through it, they find something else. To me, the way the bylaw, uh, committee is set up, it's almost useless. And it's a waste of time. As far as I'm concerned, because we spend, we meet, we go through the bylaws, we say, okay, we're gonna change this, change this, move this around. Comes to council, council looks at it and says, oh, wait a minute, I think we need to do this and this and this. So, I think in, in order to be effective, I think the bylaw should be a meeting of the whole because then we won't have these issues about going back fifteen, twenty times to the bylaw, back to council, back to bylaw, back to council, back to administration, back to council, back to bylaw. My, my, my issue is that with the bylaws, because it, it's, there's so much back and forth. Make it a, a committee of the whole, all council is there to review it, that all those issues that, that are found are brought up, they're dealt with, it comes to council, it'll be passed, done. Not, like, I mean, this procedural bylaw has come back, what, this is the fourth time? Third or fourth time it's come back to, 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 for final reading?
No, I think this should be the second time, right?
But? But, that, that's sort of where I'm going with this. I, I think it should be a, a committee of the whole. Every council is present, everybody reviews the bylaw. It's, it's done at one, one time, goes to council to be passed, end of story and we move on to the next one.
Yeah, you, you know what, I, I agree. We need to find a, a better way to work through some of these. I, I agree with that statement too. And if it's a committee of the whole or some other system of doing it, uh, yeah, it would probably be good. Because it is, we're not being very efficient with this.
No, no.
It's going around and it's taking a lot of extra time that it shouldn't be. I agree with that statement.
Maybe just one other comment. Um, we've really struggled with probably four. Fire alarm, um, the other one, the other fire one that's not even passed yet, that's been, I think, that would've been about five times. Um, and see, like, the ones that we're trying to do just a real quick patch, like, deal with one issue, uh, and we don't do the, the full review, that also works. And so, you, because it takes a lot more time to actually review the entire bylaw. Yet we, on this one, we just were doing two quick patches. Um, the fire alarm one, I think that one, all we were doing is removing the Bs, to put them into the B bylaw. Um, the other fire one, same thing, we were adding fire lanterns. That's our current term, fire lanterns. And that's the only word we've got, it's just.
And then, and then, and back and forth and, yeah.
And also what we've done is, is some of that we've got some external support on the bylaws, actually have some expertise in the bylaws. All those ones that we passed earlier in the first quarter, and I think there's still a couple coming, those ones went through pretty quick. You know, bylaws are almost, I'm trying to call it an art, but it's a, it's a different way of thinking. Um, as far as, um, almost the legal mind, I don't know, some people have it, some people don't. I'm, I'm not saying I'm perfect on those, some people are much better. And that might be another way of, um, improving this, is getting some, maybe some help on some of them. Because the ones that we did, they, they blew through a lot of things, I don't think there's one in, but, um, certainly I think from administration, we've got to keep that coming back continually. It's, it's a tough grind.
Yeah, and, and at the same time, I totally understand, there's good, a good reason to bring it back and make sure we catch those kinds of things. And I, I'm gonna bring up just a couple more, just to, so now we do go through it again. We can catch them all. And, and again, why, why does one person catch it now and not before?
I know.
Uh, I can't answer that because, yeah.
It happens all the time.
I know, um. But it's at twenty three point eight, that's on, uh, page twelve or twenty one there. And it says post, you know, following motions are non-debatable by members. And it says postponed to a certain date and time. It's not debatable. However, if you go back to twenty three point five point four on the previous page, right here, uh, you will see there postponed. A postponed indefinitely should include a reason for the postponement and is debatable. So, it's contradicting itself there and it's like, well, is it or is it not debatable, right? Like, and I picked that one up. And, uh, the other one I just wanted to have a discussion about is, is we were working on twenty three point six point one and I know this was one where we wanted some clarification on how we bring a motion back. And I know that you, you, you know, it has to be submitted and this is twenty three point six point one. But, uh, I'm still not clear in my mind, like, it comes back on a written report and submitted by a proper process, so it goes on our agenda. That's what we're saying. A member of council can only submit one report per, so is there a vote on whether to, it says, you know, there's a majority of members to include this item on the agenda. How do we have that vote to decide whether it should be on the agenda?
So, your worship, the way I see that is you, so if included in the agenda, council beginning of the meeting could amend the agenda to exclude it or actually keep it on the agenda.
Okay, so.
And you could do it that way. Or you could, um, wait for the, at the, the time of it and, and simply, uh, have most friends see it.
Okay, and, and so maybe on the motion for me to make it better is, on the request for decision, it should say something like, this was brought up previously. You know, first step would be to have a vote whether we can bring it back. And then the next step would be to, to, to debate the motion itself. How often does that happen? Not very often.
No.
No. But it, it could, right? Somebody may want, if somebody has a, um, a project that they wanna see happen, they could, you know, they could bring it back and bring it back and bring it back. Like, it's, in theory, it's possible to happen, so you have to have a, a process?
Could be, yeah. My point was, if we're, if we only have this happen occasionally, once in a blue moon type of thing, could we not, like we do with the ongoing C A O report? Could we not just have something in the package saying, this council brought this motion forward at this time? Would that be? No, never mind. Ignore that.
Okay, I wasn't following.
It makes perfectly sense why, yeah.
Okay, I did follow it, but that's okay. Like, this would make sense as long as it was in there in a way that people, because it says you wanna vote on it, on whether it can come back to council. Because usually it has the, it's either a year or something has changed. There's more information or different information that may wanna come back. And that's fine and say, okay, this was brought forward, now we're bringing it forward because there's this new information, everybody all right with doing this? Yea or nay? Then we can go into it. Like, that's the way I see it working. But I didn't really get that out of twenty three, out of the way it's worded. I, I wasn't clear on how you would handle that. Did you guys understand it?
I understand your explanation well.
Okay, well, so that would be another thing maybe just to tweak. Now, I'm gonna ask, is there anything else in this? Because next time it comes in, if we make those changes, we gotta get this through.
Like, the other thing we can do, they say, this bylaw, like, like, almost all our bylaws and our policies are dated. They're all using a, I shouldn't say all. The vast majority are still using, like, old languages and, and old, it's eighty, ninety, the eighties and nineties. And if, if, I guarantee you, if, if we read this again, there'd be some additional issues in here. So, we could go and put this on our complete rewrite list. That they know it, because this, this wasn't a rewrite, because this was done in twenty twenty, as we, and we were doing just two minor edits. But again, when you're starting from a, um, a bylaw that is dated already, it's, it, you know, so it's, I think it's one, two options of this one, is just send it back, do a complete rewrite. That, that's an option as well. I guarantee you, you're gonna read it again if you're buying more stuff.
This is like massive.
It's a big, it's big.
Counselor Gilroy. Um, what I've noticed, the bylaw committee works, they're very hard to get this done. However, as our C A O mentioned, uh, there are times that we do piecemeal work. And I noticed most times we send it back is because we've done the piecemeal work without recognizing, this happened to the fire one, where we actually, and the one here where, uh, Counsel Stenhouse brought it in, where we have references, but they're. but they're, references attached to nothing.
Yeah.
And in this case, Council Stenhouse brought it up and said, I see existed here, but there's no definition for it. And we've done that, and that's why a number of them have been brought back, is because when we piecemealed it and not looked at it as a whole, and that's part of, I would say, and I know Council Dan can be disagree, but that's part of our fault with bylaw, I think. That we didn't see that there was anything connected to it. Or the person who we were asking to advise us on it, not knowing that there was, uh, pieces that were dead ends, that were not connected. And so I think if, if we actually were, uh, if we were given time to look at these and see however these connects together, and where these missing pieces are, I don't think we'd be sending it back as often firstly. So I think it's just a matter of, if, if they're piecemealed, we need to find out what was added and whether or not there's an end to it. And then we wouldn't have half the problem we're having right now passing these things.
So what I take out of all of this, and this is my take on it, is number one, we need to come up with a better system for getting these bylaws through, and, and we appreciate that. Maybe in some cases it needs to just be a complete rewrite and not a quick fix. Uh, if, because the quick fixes are the ones that, I, I do agree with you, they have to. But, I mean, I, I know our fire chief is a little frustrated, cause I'm changing two words and all of a sudden it's been four rewrites on it. Uh, and that's good, and identifying, but it does show that there are some holes when you get six, seven people looking at it and go, oh, what about this, and what about that? You do find some holes, so that's good, but maybe somebody that's really good at it might find a way. So maybe we can leave that with administration, come back with a pro-sest to bring that back. You know, a better way of doing it. Uh, as far as this particular bylaw goes, I, I think there's two or three changes that we'd like to see. Uh, so maybe we can, and, and just make these changes, get it through. And, and, cause we do have other ones that need complete rewrites, so there is lots. This one is three quarters of the way through, let's just, in my opinion, finish it off with those few changes. Is that council's wish kind of thing? Is that, and I see nods? Okay, so maybe one of the first steps is, is on your motion. Uh, do you want to change your motion?
Yes, I would like to change it.
Okay.
I would like to change it, that it says to add the definition of question of privilege. And, and we're gonna correct the postponement.
And clarify twenty-three point six point one?
And clarify twenty-three point six point one.
And bring it back to council, right?
And bring it back.
Well, that, no, to, for approval after.
I thought we could pass it once though, I thought we could pass it tonight, and those changes will be made.
Oh, I see what you're saying, have three changes and approve it right now based on those three changes.
Yes. Cause I know there's a backlog of it, I know there's a backlog.
Are people all right with that? Counselor?
Part of the problem we have is that we do things piecemeal, and so we should wait till it comes back and it's there, and done correctly, and then vote on it. As much as we'd like to have confidence, but if we get a, if we get this five years from now saying, oh, there's a couple mistakes here, we're not. So I would say get it done right, bring it back to council.
Okay, we've got a couple, and that's where we're, I guess, I guess other thoughts before we take it to votes on how other councils think, one's saying do it with, uh, letting administration make the changes. Others are saying bring it back in a finished product and we'll just approve it. Uh, but at least we can see what the finished product looks like.
Right, finished product.
Finished product and product.
Okay, and it, okay, send it back. Okay, so my motion will read that we send this bylaw zero-nine dash two-zero-two-one, procedural bylaw, back for administration to make corrections, bring it back for council approval, let the corrections.
Okay. Everybody, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. And we'll leave the idea with administration on how we can work better, get through bylaws. To go back with some ideas, cause I, um, okay, moving on then to, uh, policy, not a bylaw. Use of the town of High Prairie Brandy. Get a motion on this one. Counselor Gilroy?
Then Council direct administration to present the draft ADM dash zero-one dash two-zero-two-one, use of the town of High Prairie Brandy as a public sector policy to the bylaw committee for review.
Okay. Uh, but before we do that, is that we need to make sure everybody's happy with this, or, you know, as council, this is one of those places where council can say, this is what I like, or, or not, so we don't bring it back and forth too many times. What's the general, uh, the general gist when I read this, is if somebody wants to use the town logo, the CIO approves it, and we get the product, give it to the merchant, they can then turn around and sell it. If they wish to. Is everybody all right with that general concept in this, this one? Counselor Danak?
So three point three, if the requested approved, approved by CIO, town administrator, administration will order the promotional material or merchandise for the person, so we'll order it and they pay us? Is that how that works, okay?
Okay, uh, no other changes? All in favor? Carried. Uh, item eight point one. Towne image. Counselor Stenhouse?
By Council direct administration to inform residents that the community board is the area designated for the advertisement of garage sales and other similar events. Notify residents that starting September first, two thousand and twenty-one, garage sale signs on Highway two and Forty-Eighth Street will no, not, will not be permitted on municipal property and will be removed. Incorporate a fine structure for violators of inappropriately placed garage sale signs and similar advertisements. That council consider adding an image improvement priority to the next strategic planning session. So I brought this forward because of the numerous complaints we've had about, the town is dirty, the town is messy, um, the warnings that our peace officer have given out on, uh, unsightly. So I've really been paying attention to how we can improve our town. This is one thing that us as a council can do. Where we don't have to rely on provincial funding, federal funding, anything. Approval from the county on the fifty-fifty deal, we can clean up our main street for our visitors coming into town. I've noticed these garage sale signs, they go up, but they never come down. And the way they're being put up with the tuck tapes up to the street lights, and there's, there's no rhyme or reason to them. Some are made of cardboard, some are bought. It's one way that we can start cleaning up our town. And we can start with our own civic square, where all these, like, the first set of lights are, where all these signs are. We're moving, moving signs, garage sale signs, let's start cleaning it up. We have a board outside, a communication board, a public arena, where they can post all the information they want. And they can post their private sale signs on their own private property, let's clean up civic square.
Counselor Gilroy?
I, I appreciate the, uh, comments of Council Stenhouse. Um, in some ways, I think this is too limited. I would like to see it, that it's not, a lot of it posted on any municipal property. Is, the words worded here, it just talks about this municipal property. I'd like to see it on any municipal property, um, that it's that way. So, because once again, it's, and I think it's, it's fair to say that, uh, for example, I, we've had, myself, I've had a number of yard sales over the years. At the end of our yard sale, we pick up our signs, and we take back, because that's what you do. But I think it's very important that, uh, we do address this, um, because, uh, the, uh, well, I remind you, some of these yard sales are, like, I think some of the signs were like last year.
I know, definitely was.
You know, it, it's, so it's important that we do try as much as possible to, um, in a sense, or clean up the image of our town. Uh, and if, if people wanna have the yard sales, they need to also be responsible for taking down the advertisements, or they can put it on social media. I mean, I've seen people put it on social media, on the High Prairie community, High Prairie community, um, or my cell as well as the, um, discussion page. So, yeah, I, I agree with this, but I, I still wanna add that any municipal property, okay, cause.
Other comments?
No.
Yeah, I, I know what you guys are thinking, and I'm probably thinking the same thing. It seems like we're, and everybody agrees with trying to change the image and make it clean, that's, that's a given. We're really targeting garage sale signs, and in, in my head, I think, well, it's not, that's a really small piece. We have a regulation in there that says, yes, you gotta take them down within seventy-two hours. Uh, we may need to enforce that regulation, and I know you talked about, you know, having a fine if they don't, and, and, you know, giving it out and saying, yeah, clean this up. Because I agree, if they're still up there a week later, or two weeks later, that's not acceptable, and, you know.
The addresses all the time, just go through another law.
Address, phone number, you know?
Yeah, for, I just, I mean, uh, it's not, yeah, and, and, you know, I like the, the statement where, I like the idea of maybe where the town focuses on a cleanup week. I really like that idea, where saying, you know, that's what I got out of this, was I really liked was, let's spend, uh, this week, it's town cleanup, and really focus on that, and advertise it, market it, and, and get some buy-in, where we go in and, you know, if there is some tuck tape left on a, a lamp post, we take it off, and pick up the garbage around town, and, and make a statement that, you know, we wanna see these things happening. And, uh, and some of the other things that we'd like to see in town, like the, the long grass in the alleyways, you know, nobody's cutting, or not nobody, a lot of people aren't maintaining the, the grass in their alleyways. They, you know, clean up to their fence, but what's behind the fence into the alley is left to grow wild. So there's a lot of those things that I, if we focus on a cleanup week and get people to do it, I think is more important.
Fire truck, what was the trailer, the trucker has all the garbage, put it in the bag. You gotta use for the fire truck. A parade, a parade of garbage.
Tourists and visitors driving the back alleys. We have tourists and visitors, and possible, uh, business people driving our main track here, that see this stuff.
Yep, no, I, I, I know where you're coming from, uh.
How do they know where the information was, though?
No, I don't think it'd have personal people garage sale, he's probably looking for some money.
Say, oh, I don't know, just.
So that's what we're gonna do, is our tourism, and it's our garage sales? We're gonna be known for High Prairie Garage Capital, but not there?
I don't know.
Counselor Gilroy?
So I'm just trying to understand what you're talking about, Mr. Mayor. So you're suggesting that we need better bylaw enforcement? Is that what you're suggesting for the main street, that since we have those, um, bylaws in place? Because that's, I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to say.
Yes.
So would that include, for example, businesses with, uh, broken signs and stuff like that as well? Like, what, to what extent are you talking, sir?
Well, I mean, even, you know, we, I, you know, especially signs that haven't been taken down, that's one area that we can easily target, but we have the unsightly properties, and, you know, like the Husky, you drive by there, they've got some really tall weeds growing there, does not look good. All of those kinds of things, especially, I agree with you, down our, our highway corridor is, is the most highly visible spot, and, and looks poorly on that, so I would focus on that. And, and I really, I think what we're doing, as we're targeting just those signs and, and really nailing that, is a very tiny, tiny piece of making our town. It's, I, I, I like what you said by adding image improvement to the next strategic planning session, cause there's several things that might be tied into that, and, uh, that's, that's where I'm coming, I, I like that one. I just think trying to piece me into one little tiny piece at this point seems like small for me. That's, that's where, but I totally agree with what you're saying, and taking them down, and we have the bylaw to enforce it. Thank you for the clarification. Counselor?
It's important that, that the people follow the rules. I, I don't dispute for a second, are the unsightly, I absolutely agree. But before we start handing out fines, we have to also think about the people who are having these garage sales, and the people who use these garage sales as a means to get school supplies and new buying shoes for the kids, because they can't afford the new shoes. And, and a lot of the people that are having them are, are supplementing their, their income, so they can get groceries. So before we, we start hitting them with tickets, could we not look at, at making it a, a bit of a blitz? I, an educational sort of blitz out there, put it on the radio, do this, do that. So that people know that that's gonna be their responsibility, and they could be fined. Cause a lot of them, I'm sure, don't know that they could be fined. That's the last thing on their mind. So, uh, if we took it soft and, and tried education first, instead of helping people who can't afford it. Like the doggies.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we have the newsletter that goes out every month, there would be the perfect place to, get people's attention and to promote it, and, and to, you know, say, we're gonna be checking on it, make sure your signs are taken down. Yeah, if they're left up there, it's not good, I agree.
So you're saying it's okay to be up there, but just take them down fast?
Yes, that's.
Within seventy-two.
That's my viewpoint.
She's saying not at all.
Not at all, and, and that's, I don't, I don't, I'm just.
I'm just saying, that's.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're not, you're not allowed a garage sale, I'm saying down our main corridor.
You can't put signs on main corridor, and that's, yeah, I, so, I don't know how others feel. Counselor Danak?
I know, especially on the corner here, by the lights and on the town property, um, there is, it tends to cause some congestion, because people see those six or eight signs that are on the corner with the linestase garage sale here, wherever, so they're stopping and they're running across the road to look at signs with the pad of paper and they're writing down. So there is that congestion on the corner there, definitely, for sure. Um, now, if, there's something we can do about, you know, not. Now, if there's something we can do about, you know, not having those signs there, or something, I, I, I don't know. Is that sort of just where people navigate to, to stick them there because it's high traffic, you know, people are stalling? I, I, I truly do understand where you're coming from, in terms of, you know, the garage sale signs and the faded ones on other streets or whatever and, and stuff, but, I would, I would like to start with the education part of it first, and then see how that pans out, and then go from there. To me, finding, I'm not sure, finding somebody because they, they don't remove theirs. So, somebody puts a sign up with a, an address, it's not taken down, does Al go to the address and say, hey, here's your sign? Like, I, I'm trying to figure the logistics of how this is going to play out. And I'm just not, I'm not getting it. It's just not flowing through me here, so.
Yeah, and, and I think that's the intent. If you leave your sign up past the 72 hours, then, yeah, you'll, he might bring it to the property and, and maybe the first time a warning, but the next, if you do it again, there'll be a ticket. And, and I know you talked about adding a, a fine for that, because I don't know if there's an actual fine associated with leaving your sign. Oh, Alan's nodding, there is a fine.
Hundred dollars.
It's what?
A hundred dollars.
Oh, wow, good. So there is a big fine. So, like, I, I, yeah, I get it. I definitely think this is a topic that we need to talk more about, for sure. And so I love Dee adding this, you know, improvement to strategic planning, maybe coming up with some ideas and really focusing on it. I love that part of it. And we do have a fine structure if they do violate now, but the question is, do we want to allow them then to, to put them on the highway or on the, along the highway? Is it acceptable or not acceptable? Because we can change that.
Counselor Long?
And not to open up a can of worms, but when we have people come into town hall complaining about a fine that they received on dog licenses or whatever, they come to council and often as the case will waffle and, and go easier. And when little grandma comes up, town council saying, I've got a hundred dollar ticket for having a garage sale because my sign didn't get down soon enough. Are we going to say, too bad? Suck it up? I don't think we will. So I think we need to make the fine realistic for the offense and forgetting that your sign is up there or whatever, it's not worth a hundred dollar fine. I think twenty-five would suffice.
Counselor Gilroy?
Uh, just a question for Burn. If, for example, uh, we just, once, you know, on the Monday following the garage sales, what would it cost, because I'm trying to figure out fine twice, okay? What would it cost to have one of our guys strip all the signs down?
What, from just this area?
Just from the poster, because this seems to be the most important poster. It would be fifty bucks.
That's all, if you go out, wouldn't be, it's about twenty, twenty bucks?
Okay, so.
Maybe just stop on the way by and flip their light on and rip them all down?
Okay, so, I, no, no, I'm, I'm just trying to figure it out this way because if we're going to look at a fine structure and they, they're not going to pick the signs up, if we strip them down once a week, right after the, I don't know, how would that affect, you know, how would that affect everything? As opposed to, how much, how much time and effort would it be for Officer Blue to take down a dozen signs and then have to go to every single resident? I'm just trying to figure out what's most cost effective for our town here.
As you get people out and get to do themselves, you know.
Counselor Stenos?
You're teaching them nothing. If we're going to have our cons, our peace officer and public works rip down their signs, then I might as well just bring my garbage bags and dump them at the street sign, and, because I know public works will pick them up every morning. You're teaching them nothing. I agree the fine is a little stiff, but let, like, this issue has been going on about the town is dirty, the town is messy. This is the one thing, the first step that we can start, like cleaning it up. And if we're going to pick up after everybody, then what's the point?
Counselor Danak?
And I, I completely agree with Counselor Stenos. If we have somebody go around and clean up after them, we're.
What are you teaching them? What's, what's the education behind this?
Whatever.
We're going to coddle you even more, so just let her more, because public works or peace officers will clean up.
Public works or somebody's going to go clean up after them. As a, as a council, as a council, we don't like to, to, we don't like to rock the ball. We don't want, you know, like, some of us are a little heavy-handed and others, some people just want, you know, just to leave and heal and carry on and whatever. But, like, I mean, sometimes, sometimes we have to deal with the, the, the small, tiny, little incidents of, you know, the garage sale signs. It's just something that pops up that we need to, you know, like, like option one, inform residents, the community board, that's, I'm fine with that. Starting September first, I'm fine with that. The fine structure, I agree, is a little severe. And adding the improved imaging to the next council, I, I mean, as far as that goes, like, I mean, we're pretty much almost to the end of the garage sale season here with another probably month left. So, I mean, we can start the process for the next year to get things in place so the citizens know that, you know, the community board is where you can only put your signs. If they're on municipal property, they will get removed. We're notifying them that they can't do it there. The fine structure, we can look at the fine structure and reducing it to a more measurable amount. I mean, it's, it's a yard, it's a garage sale sign, a hundred bucks is a little steep. And so, I mean, I really don't have a problem with this part of it. And, I mean, this is sort of the first step for next year. I mean, it's, it'll be, you know, hard, hard pressed to, to put all this in place for the remaining month and a half. Probably that people may have yard sales, but for next year, I'm, I'm okay with, with this bylaw being put into place. The policy, I guess, sorry.
Okay. Counselor Cordley?
Put a sign, you said, go put a sign. I don't know why you do that.
But we're, we're talking about.
I know, I don't.
No, no, I don't.
Just being a town guy. No, it, uh, I think, I do agree that, yeah, the signs can be unsightly at the corner sometimes, but what we're talking about with the town image, it's not the signpost. Everything else down the street, it's not just one, one post. It's the yards, it's the, the, the yards that are uninhabited, that are closed down, that are, the businesses that are open that are just barely alive, that can't afford to repaint or redo or re, you know, it goes on and on and on. There's, there's so much to it when you look at town image. Yeah, there's some guys that are trying. I give them full credit. They're trying to make their place look better. It's about, and we have a lot of open, open lots in our place, but, and the town image is, uh, yeah, I know, it's, but like I said, it's not just one post. I mean, that one post creates a lot of chatter in the community. The people love the Sundays when they're cruising around and looking for the places. I lost touch, I see two or three vehicles parked in the town, parking up here, and they're, they're walking up and looking at them all the signs, doing it. Is that a bad image? I mean, yeah, if they leave it up there for two or three weeks and they're battered and they're, yeah, that's, that's, that's ugly, but it's not, that's not an image thing. The image is, is the cleanliness down the streets, and all the different businesses that are, that are not open. That's, that's where we have to start hammering, I think, more.
You've opened up a can of worms here.
I'm trying to restart. This is the first start.
I, I know.
Is that, I'm trying to make a first step. It's been talked about and talked about, would have, could have, should have. We don't do anything. We talk and we talk and we talk, but we do absolutely nothing. I proposed, we take a stand and say no more.
No, I, I know where you're coming from. I get it. I do. So, we have, any other comments on this? We have the motion with all of the, with the four parts?
And this is going to go back to administration? Or are we going to blow it out and straighten it out?
This counts direct to administration too.
No, this would, if we, the way it's worded is where these four things would be implemented. Oh, I see our C O wants to.
Well, I just want to make one point, and I, I don't want to drag it on, but it's, just so that everybody knows, when we talk municipal property, you know, the report is talking about the two main drags, but I know there was talk about signs on municipal property. We actually always own, I don't know, first ten, fifteen feet from the road to the person's fence. So this, you're aware, right? This, it's not really here, but every road that first ten or fifteen feet, that is ours, so.
I withdraw my thought then. Be too difficult to enforce.
Well, it's what council wants to do. The, the bylaw is, it could be, should be put on municipal property, but as the report says, they can, we just relax things, and that's, you know, that's, that's okay. But anyway, I don't want to log it down because it's not really what's part of this report. This report is just the two main drags for now.
I can't support a hundred dollar fine. That's why I said twenty-five.
It doesn't state what the fine says. That's how the bylaw changed that.
So you say I wouldn't support it.
So just so you know, right now, um, you know, I'm trying to support this or anything, but right now, that is the rule.
Yes.
Like it, right now, every sign that's out there on our property, Alan can go out there and he can do it. He's on the side. Just so you're aware, it's.
As long as, as long as there's discussion to change that back to a twenty-five dollar fine, then we're good. If not, then it's just punitive. We already recognize that there's a potential issue. But if it generates trouble, then that issue is most important. I think, I think it's punitive. It needs to be used.
Counselor Gilroy?
The, the reason I actually asked, uh, Burn about the cost was so we could get a better idea of what would be part of the fine, uh, structure. Instead of a hundred dollars, twenty-five would be better. But my, I, I just wanted to clarify, Counselor Stenhouse, you believe that the fine structure is, would be going to the bylaw committee? According to this, it doesn't, it just says that the council directs administration to incorporate a fine structure, so it would not necessarily go through bylaw by my argument. It would be, because it's not saying it goes to bylaw. It just says that whatever it comes up with would be the fine structure according, or I go by the wording here. And so I just want to be clear on your intent on that, please.
What I was responding to is, Counselor Long said he wouldn't support a hundred dollar fine. I said it doesn't state a fine in there. It just says you're subject to the fines. You, bylaw is the one who said, the bylaw committee said, set the fines schedule night.
The council sets the fines.
Right.
Just to be clear, it's council that sets the fines. But, uh, yeah, and in here, it says incorporate a fine structure. We already have a fine structure according to, uh, Alan, so we, you could, so we have a fine already attached to not doing it. I mean, we can always review it or not review it, or, but I mean, we do have a fine, so that.
Can you review the fine structure instead of incorporate it? If we've already got a fine structure, we just review it and make it more appropriate as Counselor Long suggested.
And then the other wording in here that's, um, troublesome is the word municipal property, as our C O pointed out. All along the boulevards is municipal property, so you wouldn't be able to put a sign up anywhere, right? Like, that's the only place you could put a sign in is on your own land.
No, it says on my way to and Forty-Eighth Street.
Yes.
Will not be permitted on, I should say, that municipal property.
Okay, just along the highways there.
Yeah. It's a start.
Okay. Okay, uh, any more discussion, changes, ready to vote?
Can we change that one to incorporate, or, sorry? Because you're already going to incorporate the fine structure. I, I really believe we need to change that wording to reevaluate it, or, or something, because everyone wants to make the change. They don't, we've already got a hundred dollars. Sorry, we've already got a hundred dollar fine, and we all say that's too high. So we need to review that fine structure. So I think we need to change the wording to, instead of incorporate a fine structure, review the existing fine structure so that we can, we can take it from a hundred dollar fine down to something that's more acceptable for council.
Okay, well, that's up to the person that made the motion. That's her.
Review it.
Yeah. So you're making that amendment?
I'm making that amendment.
Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Defeated? I don't want, I, 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 the idea is fantastic, and I don't want to lose that.
Aren't we moving on to the next?
No, but I, I.
Relation is over?
What's that?
We, haven't we already made it that?
No, I, I'm going to make a motion, uh, that council add image improvement to the next strategic planning session. Direct, you know, council directs administration to add image improvement to the next strategic planning session. Because it'll likely be a new council, and we don't want to forget this because it's something that will have to be discussed. And I think the idea is, is awesome, and we need to, and there's some great ideas in here. You know, the, that were covered in there, so I think it's, and there's more, though. There's more than, than the, the first step, so. I'll leave that motion. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Can I make one motion out of this as well?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we review the fine structure for violations. Now, I'm not sure of our C O, how you want this worded, because we've all agreed we don't want to have a hundred dollar fine for these kind of violations, so how would our C O like the rest of that to be done, so that we can just evaluate the fine structure?
Like, I don't think there's been very many tickets issued on garage sales in the past decade. I mean, our peace officer is here, I think he should, I suppose, too. It's one of those things that, you know, a lot of our peace officer type stuff is done on complaint basis. Right? And that's something that the town has become comfortable with, and so maybe Alan would want to give it a bit more. So it's, the fine is there, but it hasn't.
How to say, amend the specified penalty relation to the removal of the sign, garage sale signs? Amend specified penalty in the traffic bylaw when referring to the garage sale signs not being removed.
Or say temporary signs.
Now, in this, is that fine? Alan, is, is that fine specific to grad sale signs only? Like, is there a fine just for grad sales or is it incorporated into a bigger, uh...
Well, you said, uh, specifies grad sales or moving out sales.
Oh, it does say, okay. I just thought it might be part of a bigger...
No, no, just those two.
Okay.
So if we could, if I could make a motion to that effect, uh, because, just because it seems to be the will of the council to lower it from a hundred dollars to a different amount, like twenty-five dollars. Um, so I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Uh, just to be clear, what is your motion? Is it, is it, I've heard, we review it to lower it, I've heard...
No, no, you review, you review, you review the, uh, I, I think Alan had actually said it quite well, but it's a review that, that, uh...
Review the traffic bylaw, specify penalty of a hundred dollars in relation to the grad sale sign.
Okay, so it's just not to specify an amount?
Right.
Okay. Okay, any discussion on that?
Good.
Okay.
It's not to specify an amount for this, but for the fees by law.
Yeah, they would review it and come back with a recommendation.
Well, good.
Okay. All in favor?
That's point zero, five hundred percent.
All right, uh, let's do one more and then we'll take a break before we, uh, which one, I think, wait, the next one will be quick, but I think the next one after that will be a little more lengthy again. One quick one here. I know, eight point two appointment of a returning officer. Counselor Stenhouse?
The council directs administration to advertise for one week on the electronic sign website, social media for appointment of returning officer and and have Reid Moore as substitute returning officer for the two thousand twenty-one municipal elections under section thirteen of the local authorities election act.
What?
Okay, so what you're saying, you want to advertise it before you appoint it, that's your motion?
Yeah.
Um, and I'll, I, to me, I don't, I'm, I'm just speaking up, don't mind it. You need somebody that's got a specific skill set, and I don't think we have very many and we're just, I know, I normally agree with advertising, but I don't know. Does anybody have another skill set? And doing a formal hiring process, but...
Well, I'd like, I'd like the job advertised, so it's open to anyone and everyone who wants to apply, who fits, who is qualified.
Counselor Gilmore?
As I am unaware of what the requirements are that you're talking about, what are the specific requirements, uh, for a returning officer?
Our CEO would have...
So you're, there's, uh, there's, before there used to be actual course that you had to take. Now there's nine, I think there's nine modules on the, uh, municipal websites. There's, they're about, um, like one to two hours each. That's, that's a key piece.
So would then Counsel Stenhouse be suggesting that whoever, uh, would answer this, um, a wide disposition, that they would come certificate in hand, saying that they'd already done all those hours? I'm just trying for clarification here so that I know what we're talking about. So you, that's what you'd be saying?
Um, yeah, who's, they would know what they're applying on, right? So there could be someone in Donley or there could be someone in Flair who's interested in the position. I, I would like to see it posted.
Counselor Danica?
Um, I'm looking at the timeframe here, because the election is October eighteenth. Uh, nominations have to be in by, what, Rod came September...
The twentieth.
Pardon me?
I believe the twentieth.
September the twentieth, okay. So I'm looking at the timeframe here.
I'm just asking for one week's advertisement on social media, on our board, just advertise it.
Counselor Long?
Mr. Martinson has graciously put his name forward to take this on. Um, and if, if we, if we need to advertise for it, I suppose, but if you get forced the most, you've done it before, you've done it before, you've done it lots of times, he's fully qualified. But, not a sort of...
I'll just give my thought, and I, I agree with Counsel Stenhouse that position should, you know, especially, position should be advertised, I, I don't like the idea that they're not advertised. Uh, however, this is a very short and small contract versus a position with the town. So for me, and, and because it's such a specific skill set, I'm okay with not advertising it and just finding somebody that can do it. Uh, so that's where I'm coming from on this particular one, and it's not just one week of advertising, because then you've got, if you get applications, then you gotta interview them, and you gotta check references, and you gotta do all of that stuff that you would with a position. And that's gonna take time and effort, and it's gonna be pushing with our shorter timelines that we have now. I, I wouldn't support the motion, that's, that's where I'm coming from. And normally, I'm all over advertising for any position at the town. Well, we have a, a bylaw that says you must, or at least a policy that you must. Uh, but for a short contract position like this, uh, I wouldn't support it. I don't know if anybody else has comments on it. Saying none?
Well, I would, I would just like to reply, Counsel Long. It's not personal. It, it, it is not personal at all. It is just, I'd like to see every job advertised for everyone.
We know you by now, you're pretty much a, to the point, no, no, it wasn't personal.
No, well, no, you said Mr. Martinson's put his name, and it's nothing against Mr. Martinson. It is not personal.
Yeah.
And that's where we have to change our attitude, that this is not personal. It's, it's a policy, let's follow it, let's post it. I'm only asking for a week, I know we're in a crunch, but let's post it.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I, I think that Counsel Stenhouse had, uh, has the best intentions there because technically, I would, I would have been wondering, we have to read this now. Uh, when we knew that our original returning officer had resigned and was no longer able to do it, maybe that's when we should have actually put it up there. Um, how, no offense, but how Mr. Martinson came to apply where others weren't able to apply is, you know, a little surprising. And once again, there's no problem with that. I think it's just the optics, and I'm a very, as you know, I'm an optics person. And that is that we need to be seen as allowing the best person possible and be seen that way, and if Mr. Martinson is the best person possible, then we need to okay it. So that's all I'm getting at here, it's, it's, because we're talking about time. How long ago did Ms. Tenpom, uh, resign?
So, I, just on that point, perhaps, uh, our CEO can fill us in on what the hiring policy is just in terms of needs for advertising position. I can't say I'm totally familiar with it, uh, but I would think that there is a provision for shorter-term positions, shorter-term contract positions versus a regular salary position.
Yes, so this salary position, we have to advise for two weeks, that's within, uh, policy. This would be, uh, a contract, so, um, it is going to be for, um, you know, a pretty minimal amount. You start at number seven, five thousand, this, this obviously isn't yet, the, the payment's capital coded or not, that's a magic number that really focused on, you know, where to determine that type of thing. Um, this is, um, basically a personal service contract with, and again, it's probably gonna be for their services, a couple thousand. So it's basically, uh, just a personal service contract that I can, I'd be able to do, but I do understand, um, you know, a lot of the comments that were made here. Uh, another reservation came in, basically the week after this council appointed a returning officer, and, uh, I, I asked, you know, who else had, um, election experience, and it was only, like, no, one name that she knew of. And so I got on, got on the call and, uh, pretty much begged for a couple of weeks. And, uh, yeah, but I, I can absolutely understand the comments that are, are made around the table here as far as posting. Um, you know, behind that, I probably should have done it. I was just relieved when I heard there was somebody out there that had the skills to do it and, um, just thought I'd release some work, but I, I do appreciate every comment that's around here, a hundred percent, I would. It changed my approach, I'd say.
So, and for clarification purposes, would we be going against our policy by doing this contract?
No.
Okay, anything else? All right, uh, we have a motion to advertise for a week. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that motion's defeated. Anybody want to make another motion? Counselor Long?
That council amend motion two thirty-nine dash twenty-one by replacing Nancy Tan County with Brian Martinson to read as follows. That council appoint Brian Martinson as returning officer and Reid Moore as substitute returning officer for the two thousand twenty-one municipal election under section thirteen of the local authorities election act, or it's eighteen thousand.
Okay, we've talked about it lots, any other discussion though? Saying none, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And I know we'll have some good discussion on the next one, but we need to take a break, and then we'll, uh...
Look, Chris, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, eventually a positive. What was it, the time door, my, as much, on the, uh, on the, uh, some garage sales? It was, it was top three. It was a three, three?
Yeah, it should have been a close one here. So, just to give you an example.
Pardon?
I might not remember that.
You know, what I thought, you know, why just, as you know, signs, why not, you know...